It's an interesting meeting. It's worth listening to, I think.
Yeah.
It's pretty much intense.
On YouTube, uh?
Yeah. About YouTube.
Hey Kelly, are you there?
Sorry, I had to find you on my computer. Yeah, I'm here.
All right, you got forums. So anytime you want to start, your recording is going.
And everyone, it's November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, this is the GBOS regular meeting. The government board of supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Open Meetings Act as found in the statutes point four dot six two dot three one zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two five public meetings. The government board of supervisors operates under the government public meeting standards of conduct. I call this meeting to order at seven oh one. I'm Brianna Sullivan, the co-chair. The government board of supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land we reside on. The community of governments situated between the areas known to be Inuit and Alaskan homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. Uh Kyle, do you mind doing the roll call?
Sure. Um Jennifer Rengard.
Here.
Brian Burnett.
Here.
Mike Edgington.
Yeah.
Kelly Upnick.
Here.
And Brianna Sullivan.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I'm ready to just converse with the seven. Do it on the item as we get to it. There are none at the moment. We'll go through new announcements. All committees of the government board of supervisors will be holding officer elections after January twenty twenty five meetings. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. About the discussions, stay productive. Please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions and entertain the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in seconds. Do you have any discussion?
I have an amendment to me. We'd like to add one more item to the very end under new business, uh which is the um uh the capital projects or say consideration uh from the service area.
The second need amended.
I'll second.
Just very briefly, um there's the way that capital projects being dealt with has improved a little bit this year. And one of them is to have a specific way that persons service areas can decide their recommend cases. But we just got confirmation today. We've wanted this to be discussed today and then discussed.
I think if we did get that in know today, so that would be prudent to have it nailed by December seventeenth since our next meeting. Any objection to the go by consent on the amendment? And then back to the agenda as presented with the amendments, any objections? Set off once. Agenda with amendment is approved. Minutes approval. We have three sets of minutes here.
Move to approve all three sets of minutes. That's October the twenty first regular meeting, October the twenty eighth MOA GBOS quarterly meeting, and November the fourteenth staff work session.
I'll second.
Okay, so for any discussion on the these minutes. There are none. Um minutes will be approved. Thank you. Okay, we're onto the consent agenda.
There is something briefly discussed, sent to generator. Okay, um so this is a um uh variance request or dimensional variance request for property in Upper Crow Creek. So that falls within LUC Community Council. Uh it doesn't fall within uh GBSA. It's outside of um of the service area. So the question is, I don't think we get these very often. So the question is, do we, should we actually take an action at all? And if we do, we probably need to reword the uh the letter of nonobjection slightly to say what we're doing is passing on recommend uh any comments or no comments from land use because we as a board of the service area don't have any. That's not within our service area, so we don't.
But as the Ex officio council, you do.
We do as the Ex officio community council, we do it in a slightly different way. So it's a it's a slightly, we need to at least acknowledge that in the letter. That's what I'm saying. We have to. We do issue certain.
We haven't heard any official objections to the variance requests.
One choice is not to respond at all. The other choice is to respond to that objection. So it's quite slight.
Okay.
I thought that at land use, there was discussion of them maybe forwarding their minutes.
You could do that.
That would be maybe more targeted.
Maybe there would be one possibility is send a letter of nonobjection with the language is tweaked. So it's clear what it is. And then we have a way of dealing with these in the future as well and to the minutes.
We don't know that they will actually make any action either with that. So and it's just the day before or two days before the meeting itself. So anyway, just offering more confusion.
This is this is an interesting awkward situation. I I'd personally be more comfortable if we just plain left it. Uh I mean, LUC can, if LUC chooses to forward something, but uh I do find it really awkward that we would have anything to say about it when um even though we are the ex officio council, but we can't legally like the Crow Creek people can't be on this board. So I think we should should leave it.
So kick it back to the LUC and if LUC wants to push their minutes forward, they can.
Yeah, I guess we uh let's do that formally. Let's just say the uh we're supposed to take no action on this. And then maybe in the future we'll address when we do our tools and procedures, what we should do with the situation. But for now, just take no action. So that's what I mean.
Okay, official motion.
I'll second.
And and with all that heads nodding, obvious agreement, uh I think that's a great way to move forward since there's no precedent yet. And if we put a good example to add to those procedures, uh go by consent on this. And there are no objections to that motion. So motion that Mike made about forwarding back, kicking back one of these passes. Okay, finish with consent. We'll go to the presentation. So I have a plan number first. I haven't looked at the screen. Is Cap the console online?
Senator Geesol's here.
Thank you. Right. Welcome.
Uh yes, uh thank you. There we go. There's the microphone on. Um yeah, I've been um pretty busy getting ready for the next session. I will be the majority leader again going forward in the Senate bipartisan uh coalition. But related to Girdwood, on uh the fourth of November, I sent a letter to the Department of Transportation related to development at the Girdwood Airport. Um I'd gotten um some concern expressed uh by Camilla Seif Seifert and Cody Rice about um the potential removal of a buffer area, some um trees and a fenced area. Should this permit go forward? I did get an extensive response from the Department of Transportation, which I occurred to me to forward to you guys tonight. Sorry about that. Um I should have sent it uh when I got it on Friday. But basically just saying it's um premature to think about this since they're still in a permitting uh mode. Uh and there'll be public notice, public comment should this go forward. They do have um an Assistant Attorney General opinion that in fact this area is um legitimate for leasing and that um a- and that any buffer area really doesn't exist in reality. Uh I mean, it it's simply not there. So so I leave it for you to be aware of. I did re I did forward it to Camilla and to Cody. Uh both both citizens there in Girdwood who are living in the area and pretty concerned about it. So um so that is some recent activity just related to Girdwood itself. Um other than that, my plans for the um upcoming session, I will continue to work on the cost of healthcare, specifically pharmaceuticals. Um I've been working on uh legislation related to that, making incremental progress for the last eight years or so. Uh and I will be chairing the resources committee. So so we'll be looking at, of course, all the nor- natural resources that we have, but I'm also pretty interested in how those resources relate to our national security and defense. Um if you get my newsletter every Thursday, you know that last week I attended the Anchorage Security and Defense Conference. It was pretty interesting. And of course, we are the westernmost border of the United States, uh right next to Russia and China. And uh their aircraft and um and vessels have been bumping along our border. So I do have concern about that and the security of our resources. But other than that, Brianna, happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Geesol. We do have one on uh in the room. Mike?
Yeah, um I think the again, this is probably, I just quickly glanced through that letter from the Assistant Attorney General. It it's probably premature, but um we do have this long running question about how municipal land use code relates to uh Girdwood Airport. The state it state assures us it doesn't. They're the Wild West. They can do what they want. Um it doesn't appear that that's really the case. So there are buffers and setbacks, stream setbacks and other requirements on that land that come through uh municipal code. So if anything actually, as soon as activity starts at that point, there is a requirement to go through a municipal process and then we end up with a tension between a legal question between the state and the municipality.
Very interesting, Mike. You clearly know more, much more about this than I do, which is common. You commonly know more about the land use issues in Girdwood than I do, and I totally respect that. Um one of the things I will opine, which is uh only my opinion perhaps, uh the airport division of the Department of Transportation is um an entity of itself, and I'm sure that they will duel with the municipality over their rights of development. Uh but thanks for that information. I I'll keep an eye on this. If there's anything I can do to help in this um realm, I'm happy to try.
Yeah, I think we have two projects that might both trigger this problem, and uh it's a it'll be interesting to see which one gets there first.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we have one online. Brett, please.
Uh thank you. Question for Senator Geesol. Thank you, Brett Willbanks, Chairman, uh GHGC here. Um uh it's come up that the development at the airport could have uh a very significant impact on Davos Road and access to the airport. But that question has never really been answered as to the impact in the community, regardless of whether or not the airport and DOT determines that they can develop in any way that they want to. The fact of the matter is that it has significant access impacts on a gravel road, which is below the level of the river and subject to flooding. And it it has a significant impact to those uh neighbors that would then have a hotel of a hundred rooms um at the end of their road. So I guess that it's not that we're questioning whether or not the state can do the development. It's that we're questioning whether or not they're going to come in and mitigate some of the impacts to the neighborhood as they put a commercial concession at the airport, which significantly changes the business model of what the airport does. So my question, I guess, is, is there further opportunity uh to engage and somehow mitigate the impacts to the neighbors? And I'm thinking dusty roads, uh increased vehicle traffic, you know, things of that nature, just basic stuff, but that's never been answered. So I I hope that there's an opportunity. Can you encourage us that there's an opportunity to mitigate this impact? Or what are your thoughts on that? Thank you.
Brett, a lot of what you just talked about were in my letter when that I submitted. Uh it was much briefer than that, but but um that I submitted to DOT. So it would be helpful, I think, if you read their response and the Assistant Attorney General lengthy opine, which is, I don't know, what, fifteen pages long. Um the Assistant Attorney General uh expresses on behalf of DOT that they have no DOT has no plans to extend Davis Road or the taxiway. Um he also points out that a lot of what Crow Creek's application um is for is land that is actually off the airport property. It 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 kind of goes into some detail, um but one of the concluding remarks is consideration of these improvements is premature and unrelated to whether the land itself is approvable for lease. Now, the commissioner has, since this Attorney General report came out, which was in, was last year. Was it August of twenty three? Let me get to the end of it here and see what the date is. Yeah, it's dated July thirty one, twenty twenty three. Yeah, take a look at this Attorney General report. I'd be happy to send this to you directly if you want to put your email in chat. Um I can forward this to you, but um basically what what the AAG is saying is, look, it's premature. Some of what Crow Creek um is asking for is outside what DOT can approve and um and and DOT is not wanting to do anything about the road. So um I'm happy to send this to you directly, though.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Senator Geesol, and we look forward to reading those also. It's hidden on the screen here in the room. So thank you for sending and thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any assembly members online? So I'm back to talk to the three of ours. Welcome.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um here online. As usual, I'll run through my list uh fairly quickly, but happy to expand on anything you guys like. Um and then also, of course, available to to answer questions offline as well. Uh at the last assembly meeting, we we passed the budget, obviously a big milestone in the year. Um ultimately, each of the budget items was uh I believe passed universally. There was a fair bit of debate around some amendments, um mostly around a seventy five thousand dollar contract that would have been uh gone to a third party organization to come up with a police oversight plan. Bated that extensively and ultimately that failed and then a a similar version uh also failed. Uh but budget is done. Uh also, last meeting, we we pass a assembly ordinance relating to parking for persons with disabilities. Uh what it would allow, and this is mostly around the downtown area, allow persons with disabilities to park it at any metered spot. Um it would also grant them more time. I think everyone is currently limited to two hours. They'd have it up to three hours. And then also for for people who park in handicap spaces who should not be there, it increases the the penalties for that. Outside of regular assembly business, uh we had a press conference recently relating to the Port of Anchorage. You might have also seen a couple of articles in the news as of late. Um trying to explain to people uh what the the change in the tariff structure means to them, and it's it's a subject we talked about at length, but I think the big takeaway we want people to have is that, yes, there is a tariff surcharge that it will be um going into place next year to cover costs for the modernization of the port, which is something we have to do. Uh but ultimately, in in terms of what you'll see, the impact to a loaf of bread or a gallon of milk, it's between a couple cents and a fraction of a cent. So um not to say it's nothing, but it's, we're doing our best to keep it as low as possible. Uh there's a special assembly meeting tomorrow, November twenty six. Uh we're going to look at a proposal to reorganize the executive branch. This is something the administration put forward. Um and interestingly, as we covered in a work session, something that's actually happened pretty regularly uh throughout Anchorage's history. So just um changing their positions and responsibilities a little bit. Uh also, we're looking at a contract for non-congregate shelter in Anchorage. Uh it's going to be around two point three million dollars for, I believe, close to two hundred beds. Most of these would be at the Alex Hotel, which is um hosted. Uh you're provided non-congrat shelter for for several years now, but it would be with a different operator. For the assembly meeting on December third, a couple of big items on the agenda. One is the sales tax, also known as Project Anchorage. I I believe the sponsors have indicated that we'll have the public hearing, then I I think they want to continue the public hearing uh to the second meeting in December or possibly even January. So I I don't think the vote on the proposal will will be on December third, but it's there on the agenda and I expect we'll we'll be taking testimony on it. Uh also on the agenda is a proposal to require mandatory ID checks at at establishments that serve uh liquor. Currently, there's most of us think think know that if you walk into a liquor store, um everyone has to show their ID, and part of the intent is, yes, to to make sure people underage don't bite alcohol, but also so the folks with the red stripe on their licenses can't. This would expand that requirement to um bars and restaurants as well. Uh and then finally, I'll mention for not the next meeting, but the second meeting in December is we have the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. We had a work session on it last Friday, um walking us through the history and how the the project was managed, and then also from the amendments that the administration's supporting on that. So I will, I'll pause there for questions.
Thank you very much, Dan. Okay. Uh yes, Jennifer?
Oh, yeah, thank you for the report. I was listening to the uh work session on the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, and I wondered if you had any takeaways from that or uh what kind of what your own thoughts were from the work session.
Yeah, I mean, if you were listening in, probably your 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 guess is as good as mine. You know, work sessions are not for debate. They're for people. I ask questions. Um and sometimes those questions, I think, can maybe give hints about directions they're going. I I get the sense that there was uh some support for the amendments that the administration's put forward. Um some members seem to to look favorably upon those. Um and then, as as you probably noticed, there was a fair bit of discussion around a couple of the terms, you know, especially that one around low intensity uh land use. I'm sorry if I didn't quite get that quite right. And and what does that mean? And I think you, it's not necessarily the same as saying, you know, it's not single family residence, obviously, but I think it has a similar connotation. So there was some discussion around trying to to understand what that means and and the why of it, but um I I I think it's it is still hard to say um what's going to come up, you know, when it comes up for uh a vote of the second meeting in December. I wouldn't be surprised if some members had amendments. My guess is there's probably going to be decent amount of support for the uh um for the AO as written from the administration, which again changes the comp plan in a few um significant areas.
Okay, Mike?
Uh yeah, I was going to ask about the the Project Anchorage sales tax. I thought there was uh, I think there's actually some work sessions scheduled after the December the third. Um so what I'm wondering is, is your sense that something very different might come back later in December?
Very different? I don't know. Um you know, if you've been following the work sessions, some members have put forward ideas. That I think we should expect at least some significant uh amendments relating to uh perhaps exemptions or allowing people, you know, uh below a certain poverty threshold to be exempted from the sales tax entirely. I I wouldn't be surprised if we saw some some changes to the proposals for uh the project selected um for the the one percent. A- and I I I believe the co-sponsors, um member Salt and member Rivera, you know, have talked about an S version that I think will incorporate some of these amendments. So I I guess I would say I would expect to see another version from the sponsors, and on top of that, I would expect to see some members come forward with their own amendments. I I have a feeling that there's uh yeah, going to be a lot more discussion before there's ultimately action on it.
Okay.
Hey, in the room?
Um hi, my name is Tommy O'Malley. Um my box number is five nine eight. I want to just thank uh Zach for showing up at a uh cemetery meeting um that supports uh our community. Uh I know it's hard to attend a lot of meetings, and I really appreciate you uh verifying the processes for increasing burial um space in Anchorage. Thanks. It's good to see you even not in person, but on a TV screen. Thank you for showing up tonight. Really appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Tommy. And then unlike you, I was not brave enough to drive down to Girdwood this evening, but um I I thanks for the conversation. Uh you know, obviously, things did not go the way we had hoped last year when it came to moving forward with the Girdwood Cemetery, but um we're not giving up yet, and so we're already having conversations about possible paths forward.
Thank you.
Yes, another in the room?
Thank you, Brianna. Yeah, um someone member Johnson, uh Brian Willbanks, P O four nine five, send me some mail. Um uh Girdwood resident here. I've been asked a bit more points question. I appreciate you being here and uh one echo with Tommy, so I appreciate you, you know, attending the meetings. It's important. Um the more points to question is kind of what your plan is to ensure that Girdwood gets its fair share in the Project Anchor sales tax. Because, you know, it's very much a concern that we as a community are paying exorbitant amounts of money to Anchorage, and yet we're being left out in a lot of ways of 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 funding. And so we want to make sure that we are to pay a sales tax and we get our fair share for a project. So I'm curious what your plan is to make sure that we get our fair share here. Thanks.
Yeah, so we had a work session last week, week before um on the idea for the projects uh that that would be associated with the sales tax for that one percent outside of the cap. A- and that conversation, when there was a a committee set up to review the projects and then, you know, sort of uh gather all the input that had been offered. And and part of their intent was to geographically distribute the proposed ideas. And so there was uh the one for Girdwood um relating to the 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 arts park. I I can see um Crystal Hoke is here on online and had more to do with crafting that. Um so I think if there's specific questions about that project, she might be a good person to ask. So it's in the mix. Now, ultimately, I think the sponsor's intent was that those uh six or seven projects on the list ultimately move forward on the ballot. And then as we get further down the line and then sort of scoping becomes more um more clear and we have a better understanding of of what the cost would be, that then there would be a another commission who'd be responsible for prioritizing projects, like which order do they happen in? Um things of that nature. And I, a lot of the intent there is to to try and as it stands today, I mean, it could all change. So that's that's a caveat. I think the the intent is to try and do it in a way so it is less of a less legislative discretion in it, right? Like, let's try and take some of these decisions out of the the body of the assembly so it doesn't turn into a political fight, but rather have it be made more by subject matter experts to to determine the prioritization. So i- in terms of coming up with that framework, you know, that's something that the sponsors have come up with at this point. I and I I frankly, I I don't hate the idea of of sort of making it apolitical in terms of how we select the projects, you know, if the sales tax is approved. Uh but we'll see what happens there. And and you know, if we do end up going down that route where where members are expected to fight for projects within their district, then um certainly I won't forget Girdwood's there, but I'll just tell you that's I I potentially messy, right? You know, I mean, I mean, any seven of twelve can can essentially make any changes they want. Um and then, you know, I mean, with that too, always throw out the caveat that, look, right, I think the sponsors and then those of us who who would like to see this thing be successful, we're going to do the best we can to come up with a proposal that hopefully you see value in. But if you don't, you know, it will be on the ballot and it'll ultimately be up to the people of Anchorage and Girdwood to decide whether or not they're okay with this.
A quick follow up quickly?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um on that, for the selection committee and trying to understand how that process works, it goes to the assembly who is going to go ahead and put together a list of four projects plus two smaller projects. But then are those going to this MAPS committee to then be put on the ballot? And how is that going to be done before the end of January when it's required to be passed by the assembly to be put on the ballot? I don't understand how the committee fits in if the projects were already predefined by the assembly.
Well, the the projects that we took up at the work session were forwarded to us not from within the assembly, but it was something the project sponsors or excuse me, the the um the ordinance sponsors came up with, and that was done in in um coordination with uh the Alaska Economic Development Corporation. They've been the ones kind of spearheading this. So they they presented the list to us. And and I think we don't have final AO language that includes the projects on it. I think there's placeholder language in there currently saying that something like projects go here. Um so yeah, that'll probably be in the S version of the the ordinance.
Okay, you can. I'm sorry. So 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 the assembly selects six projects hypothetically. It goes to the ballot and then the MAPS committee afterwards determines what ones are going to be funded, what which extent, but they have to be from the selected list of items on the ballot that were passed by the voters hypothetically. Is that correct?
I believe I I believe that's in the intent, but you know, we don't have that final language in front of us. But as I understand it from the sponsors in the work session, um that was my takeaway.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the check.
Thank you. Uh thank you again, Zach, for all of your time tonight and your service.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to Carl Jacobs or AMC.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Jacobs. I serve on the AST school board. Hope everyone's uh doing well. Uh just a couple of quick updates, and we'll happily step aside and let you move on with the rest of your agenda. Uh the school board has focused our student outcome section of our board meeting specifically on K three reading outcomes. Um as I've discussed at at previous GBOS meetings, um the board dedicates a substantial portion of our two quarter um monthly business meetings to monitoring outcomes. And this month specifically, we've looked over the latest uh data related to AK Star. Uh for those who are interested in reviewing the presentation as well as our work sessions, you can access those at ASDKtwelve.org slash school board. For those who are interested in reviewing the presentation as well as our work sessions, you can access those at ASDK12.org/schoolboard. In addition, the board has spent the majority of its time this month as well as late last month prioritizing its work on the rightsizing initiative that will reduce the overall footprint specifically for ASD in elementary schools. There have been a multiple community town hall conversations as well as two online conversations. And the board is continuing its work at the upcoming 12-3 work session as well as a special work session related to our budget and rightsizing on Saturday, 12-7. That'll be at 9:00 AM. And then those dates are ahead of our final decision point related to our budget and rightsizing at our 12-17 meeting. I did just touch on our budget. That is the other area of focus for the board right now. Unfortunately, due to a, a significant structural deficit, the district, like many others in our state, are looking at having to increase class sizes, reduce the level of service provided, and overall have fewer educators in our buildings. And that is a prospect that I certainly take seriously. I know the rest of the board does too. And so we're navigating how best to pass a balanced budget as required by statute while also ensuring that we provide the best level of service available to all students while the legislature, hopefully shortly after gaveling in, seriously considers taking up a education funding and spending bill. With that said, that's really all I have tonight. I would be glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, I appreciate the chance to to brief GBUS tonight.
We have a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Mike Edgington, there, GBUS. Just a quick question. Is there, what's the vacancy rate currently amongst teaching staff in ASD? Because I heard something recently that it was still fairly high. And I see that both makes class sizes worse, but in some ways makes the budget situations slightly less extreme.
Sure, yeah, I, I don't have up to the date figures. The last time I looked, there was dozens of openings primarily in the elementary level as well as multiple openings in the secondary level as well. I also know that we have over 100 long-term substitutes still in classrooms and substitute educators. To be clear, are individuals that don't necessarily have a, are not certificated educators through like the University of Alaska or have a comparable level of education and training. And so there's a significant shortage in ASD and that tracks with what other districts are seeing both in Alaska and to depending on the state, a lesser degree nationally. Alaska has a unique challenge in that our University of Alaska system is producing roughly, well, based on last year's data, I believe, was roughly around 160 certificated educators per year, which doesn't even address the ASD attrition turnover retirement. And so educated recruitment and retention is a massive challenge in our state for sure. The State Department of Education surveyed, attempted to survey roughly 15,000 current and former educators in Alaska in 2020. They, the respondents of that survey by the Department of Education indicated that pay, workload, affordable healthcare benefits and a pension were really things that they were looking for to be recruited and retained. And so certainly have been advocating for that ever since ASD formed a internal stakeholder working group related to educated recruitment and retention, which was approved and requested by the board. So they have been meeting actually internally, and then we're in the process of negotiating our teacher contract here with the Anchorage Education Association. Of course, so many of the working conditions that our educators are asking for involve a monetary note. And so it's a definitely a challenge. I'm hoping we have and I'm confident that we will have intense and significant conversations in the legislature about how to address those challenges, but really appreciate the question. Hopefully, there's some added context there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carl. Thorough update. We have another question online. Brett, go ahead.
Yeah, Brett Will, P O Box 512, Girdwood. So can you, just a quick question, can you give to me your understanding of Alaska's per student spending as it ranks to the rest of the nation? It's my understanding that it's like we spend within the top one, two or three per student in the nation. So is that a proper understanding?
So I'll point to a study and I'll, I'll see if I can find the link and put that in the chat that was performed by UAAISER, the Institute of Social and Economic Research, which most recently updated, I believe in 22 or 23, a study that said adjusted for inflation and cost of living, Alaska is no longer even above the national average in K 12 education spending. If you look at raw dollars that aren't adjusted for cost of living, and I, I don't think that's the wisest or most informed decision that one could or data that one could look to. There are figures out there that point to a different picture, but this is something the UAAISER has looked at extensively and has conclusively drawn now, I think, for two straight revisions that Alaska is below the national average in education spending.
Okay, thank you very much again for your time, Mr. Jacobs, and giving this thorough report.
Of course, yeah. Hope everyone has a great night and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Thank you. Is Tim Charlin here?
He's not.
H L B A C reports. And then we'll go to supervisor reports. Let's start in the room. Anyone have a report? Mike?
Just a quick, quick one. Assemblymember Johnson earlier mentioned that the budget was passed. There were three items with Girdwood, with Girdwood in the name in the budget. Or three, three amendments, I should say, that related Girdwood. One was to move the Timberline Road project through a bond, and that passed. There was also one about increasing EMS funding for fire departments. That was postponed until quarter one revisions are being discussed. There's almost certainly going to be a number of discussions between now and then, possibly including rebalancing of fire department and EMS funding municipal wide. And then the other one was a capital request for Little Bears that, which is an amendment that that Zach put forward, and that's also been delayed until Q one revisions, when there may be a little bit more money available. At least we'll have better understanding of how much money is available. So that was just a quick report on budget amendments, and then week after next, there'll be a AML conference.
Okay, thank you. Brian, do you have anything?
Nothing for Parks and Rec. Thanks.
Okay, Jennifer?
No, nothing. Not in the minutes, really.
Okay, thank you. I was going to simply add what Mike said, and that was the amendments that were postponed for the fire departments, both for Chigak and Girdwood with alcohol tax. And then the Board of Directors for the Fire Department has their next meeting December of last. Kelly, do you have anything to report?
No, I think it's covered later in the agenda.
Okay, great. Let's go to committee updates. Are there any committees here, our three minutes around here, like report something outside the minutes? Tommy?
Yeah, I have two reports. First one is on the Cemetery Committee. There was a meeting today called by the Girdwood Cemetery Committee and the Anchorage Cemetery Advisory Board at the cemetery. And at that meeting, Zach Johnson was there. And also Mike Braniff was there and Tiffany, somebody from Heritage Land Bank. And it was presented that there, we're out of room for public burials since July. Bodies are literally stacking up. The next option is for $6,000 burial plots at Angeles. So from $2,400 for burial, it's gone to $8,400 for burial. Heritage Land Bank, the Parks and Recreation Department and Zach have taken up the, the challenge to open up more burial space in Girdwood Cemetery because we are shovel-ready. And so to the process and the processes were discovered and related to first transfer the land management from Heritage Land Bank to the Cemetery Division. I know this is boring. Try not to yawn. First to transfer the land management from the Heritage Land Bank to the Cemetery Division, and then for the mayor to designate the land here in Girdwood as a cemetery. Then after that, to appropriate some money to clear a little bit of land for bodies and for cremains, burials they're talking about next summer. And I'm really encouraged that the city has taken responsibility, and I've told them that I won't call them, but they can call me. I'd like to announce now that I am resigning from the Cemetery Committee, the last standing member of the Cemetery Committee. I'm announcing my retirement or resignation. But it's being picked up. That's good. Any questions? Good. The next thing is the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Since I've spoken last, we've had two events. One was Kids and Cops, and that was at the Girdwood Ice Cream Parlor. We had 37 children attend, bringing at least two parents with them. They had got ice cream cones for attending. So that was 127 people in attendance. All of our police officers were there. They talked to the children and showed them all their tools, their webcam, their body cams, the police vehicles. And the schoolchildren also displayed their, their schoolwork. They did pictures and essays on why, how the police make us feel safe. There was another event this last Saturday, November 23rd, at the Grind, and we want to thank, first of all, Carol at the Ice Cream Parlor for sponsoring the Kids and Cops event, and then Gator at the Grind for sponsoring the Coffee with Our Cops. At the Coffee with Our Cops, we had between 35 and 44 people come in. They each got a piece of pie with their only requirement is that they had to introduce themselves to our police department. Curiously, we had a couple of visitors from outside and outside America. And they were like charmed that we would bring the police and the community together in an unofficial way. And they said that that really made the police more approachable. And I'm retiring from that, from the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I would like you to fill my seat with an applicant named Sean Marks. That would bring the committee up to four again. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I have two new questions. Great work. And last meeting, we did see the artwork from the kids.
Did you see that they wrote that police are really good at eating donuts? That's why we had pie.
Okay, oh, Jennifer?
So do I understand that there, did you say that there is no Girdwood Cemetery Committee anymore?
There aren't any members on the Girdwood Cemetery Committee. It is still statutory.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But it seems like the city is, and especially Zach, is picking up the, the challenge of I told them that after the designation, the transfer of management has been made, that with about $30,000, a path can be, a culvert can be made at Crow Creek Road and a gravel pad can be put in and an eighth of an acre can be cleared for full body burials. And after the designation, a grid can be overlaid, the cemetery for, and then cremains can be deposited or there's a word for it. And there's a pathway to doing this, and it would only cost about $60,000. It wouldn't have any paths, wouldn't have a columnarium, wouldn't be as respectful as we would like a cemetery to be, but there are bodies stacking up.
Okay, thank you.
It would relieve and it would, America, America, Anchorage has had the responsibility to bury people in Anchorage for 100 years and the, in 2023, they pass an ordinance that affirmed that cemeteries were an area-wide function of the municipality and service, area-wide service, and they are no longer providing that service. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for Zach Johnson.
Hey, Brett, your turn.
Oh, thank you, Brett. Well, thanks, Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. I just wanted to pass on that we were able to meet our deadlines for submitting for the grant, for the EPA watershed management grants. So there'll be probably a full report of that coming up in the GHGC meeting on, next Monday on the second. And then we'll probably have links to the packages that were submitted. We not only got one, but two different track packages submitted, so big kudos to the grant effort team. A lot of volunteer hours went into that and happy to say that we came in under budget, so, and on time with that. And the only thing, other note is related to probably item 10, that we did include levy as part of one of the grant track packages. So maybe we can discuss that later on in old business. But other than that, there'll be more information to follow after the GHGC regular meeting next Monday. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you for keeping that. Thanks, Mike.
Very quick question.
Oh, yes.
What, what's the rough time scale when you find out about the success of the grant applications?
From my understanding, I thought that that was in July, as late as July 2025. So that's, that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is status of proposed development, the first page of the packet. I don't know if there's any.
I'll speak this very briefly. This actually, I didn't get the latest version included, so apologies for that. Maybe you can go into the, an updated updated packet. The only change is basically to what's on this list is an appeal received for the NSTAR gas line. It looks as if that's, I don't know if there's an appeal date, but the appeal was received, so things are on hold there. Three of these have been completed, and I was going, I added in the, the airport issue, which Senator Geese will mention earlier. So otherwise, no real movement.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
So I got, had to field some questions from GHGC about where we were now on the whole bed tax situation and whether or not there were any changes with the administration. And I was wondering if we could kind of, if we could add that it's not a proposed development, but it is part of kind of an ongoing discussion. I was just wondering if we could add that to this grid in some form or another or add an update of, you know, kind of where we are at any point with identifying what taxes are coming out of Girdwood, not just bed taxes, actually, but any, like, just continue to keep that issue alive because GHGC started asking me all these questions when you were otherwise involved, I think, and actually wasn't able to answer all of them, so.
Can I suggest we do, perhaps we have just another standing report on that?
Okay, yeah, that's perfect. Okay, perfect.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next is service provider reports. So Chief Weston has the report up here on the screen, and we wanted to keep it short tonight, so if there are any questions or she wants in, she can be reached, but otherwise they're right here. Ready, can you file?
No, it's been, they've been really focused on training. We do definitely see slowdowns in November and October. But, yep, they've been, they have a whole new recruitment class in, so they're starting another wave of firefighter training.
Okay, and the next one is, it's Chief Mache.
Good evening. I previously submitted our stats for Girdwood as well as Whittier. As you can see, our traffic calls have gone down a little bit, but we're still emphasis on traffic as well as security checks during our downtimes and lulls and calls. We have roughly 20, just over 2,500 calls for service in the Girdwood area. One of the things that last week's Public Safety Advisory One of the things that last week's Public Safety Advisory meeting is, members of the public is asked if we could do some more increased traffic, especially on Aliaska Highway, inside the Girdwood proper area, where the speed limit has cruised down from forty-five to thirty, as well as pedestrian crosswalk areas. I'm notified by the officers, we will be increasing traffic in those areas. Other than that, it's business as usual. We're gonna have some staffing, not really issues, but we're gonna readjust staffing a little bit. One of our officers will be doing his military obligation for roughly around six months, starting in January. We're looking at temporarily throwing that position, but we're adjusting staffing slightly. Hopefully it won't affect our calls in Girdwood or Whittier. With that, if anyone has any questions, I'm open to any questions you may have. Oh, I'll also like to thank again, I know Tommy brought it up, but Tommy, for his great support of the Whittier Police Department, as well as Girdwood and all the events he planned, especially we recently had the Ice Cream with the Kids at the Ice Cream Shop, and he's done that for several years, as well as Coffee with the Cops this last Saturday at The Grind. I'd like to thank Tommy, as well as all the officers, for his great support for the Whittier Police Department, and just, he's sort of our unofficial public affairs liaison for Girdwood. So thank you very much, Tommy. Appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Mache. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Mache? I don't see any in the room. Thank you for the reports and for all of your service. Next is Parks and Rec and Roads, Kyle.
Sure. Um. Starting off with parks, we are trying to work through a slate of projects and getting ready for next season, and we're on the last, last month of the fiscal year, so we're wrapping up fiscal responsibilities as well, getting ready to shut out the year. But one of the big ones is the suspension bridge for the, replace the hand tram. We're currently working through that, and we're hoping to have final review on those plans, starting in January, and then out the bid hopefully sometime by March for construction. And we received a large donation to replace the bridge over California Creek at Town Square, and we thank the donor, the private donor for that, and we're gonna be working through that to get that design ready and done. It'll be similar to the bridge we built down on the lower Iditarod that replaced that one that is there currently. So we appreciate the support that we're getting from the community for projects like that, and as well, working through all our different grants that we'll be doing next year, and working with Alaska Trails to help pull off a whole bunch of projects, get a rating for that. As always, most of the things are either closed or waiting to open. We do encourage people not to use moose meadows at this point in time. We do not have enough snow coverage out there, and it still has an impact on the wetland, and that wetland is a very important piece to the drainage of the valley. So when we get about eighteen inches to twenty-four inches, then we will start grooming, and we actively encourage people to go out there. But you'll be surprised if you go out into the meadows now, that they are still soft in areas, and that you can step through into the wet marsh. So we ask people to hold off. But the five K is open and ready to go. The Winter Creek Trail is riding and walking great, so there is plenty of places to go still in the valley and recreate Lower Iditarod, even Beaver Pond. They're all in great shape, so we encourage people to get out there, and we appreciate the volunteers getting started on the five K and the sidewalk next to Alberg out there, and getting that going for grooming and skiing. So, so there are things to do, especially over Thanksgiving weekend. We are working through all our grants and getting those things ready for you, and, and as always, social media and the websites are up to date. Switching over to roads, we are now into full winter conditions, and we have been pretty light here. It's actually kind of nice with quiet weather here through November, but we know that's gonna start to pick up, and then we're gonna see the return of traffic as the resort reopens this weekend, and, and so we'll be, as always, active out there, trying to keep the roads passable and safe as much as possible can, depending on the weather. But we are project planning with our end of year here. We did have a few funds left with our operating budgets, and we're trying to purchase culverts and things like that for projects next year, so we're well ahead of the game, and ready to start right when conditions allow next year in that aspect. And then, as always, we're gonna be working on the fish culvert for the Davos and Aliaska starting next year. We have that all bid out and ready to go, and we are working through the EPA grant for the Rouen project. We did get a response from them, which was great, because we submitted a packet to them about three months ago, and then they finally got back to us last week, so we gave them additional information, so we hope that we feel that it's momentum towards getting that funding in place, so we can hopefully do design. We would love that, that funding now, but we can get design going, we may be able to pull that project off next year, but we'll see how that takes to get that money from the EPA. Budget-wise, we're right near where we need to be at this point in the year. We spent seventy-four percent of the public works or street maintenance budget. Parks and Rec, we're at sixty-nine percent, and police, we're at eighty-three percent. Fire, we're at sixty-nine percent, and housing economic fund, we've only spent eight percent so far. So a lot of that is, we haven't paid for our intergovernment charges yet, or IGCs, so those will start to come out here over the next month as we get towards the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll have end-of-year expenses to pay out through November and December. But we should, it looks like we're on for at least a balanced budget, if not a surplus for end of year, so. And just a heads up, coming up in January, we have a Martin Luther King holiday, so we'll be probably shifting some dates around there, and then in February, we have President's Day holiday, so we'll be shifting some dates around there for meetings, so just wanna give you a heads up as we get towards that, but. And always, if there's any issues out there, it's Margaret and I maintaining it, so we include some pictures of us out cutting down trees and bucking up rocks and stuff like that, so if you see projects or issues out there on the trails or anywhere within the park system, just let us know, we'll try to address it throughout the winter. Okay?
Thank you very much, Kyle. Any questions, Kyle? Thank you. Okay. All right. We'll move on to public comments. Top ring public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes, and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. You have to go on right here.
Hi, I'm, I'm speaking, I noticed that the Imagine Girdwood is not, it's not on the agenda, it's the Girdwood Plan, so I'll just address that here. As Zach Johnson mentioned, some of the information presented, there was a short presentation at the Assembly Community and Economic Development Committee back in early November, and then an hour-long work session with Assembly members last Friday. I agree with Zach, there's some bigish questions that we, from the Assembly members, which I think makes it clear that there's some confusion about what we're proposing. There's a couple of ways we might go about that. We're discussing it with the project team. There is a public hearing scheduled on December the seventeenth, which is our opportunity as a community to go to the Assembly chambers and talk about the, hopefully recommend the comprehensive plan to be adopted. There is also an Imagine Girdwood meeting next week on December the fourth at six P.M., where we're going to basically go through the issues remaining and at least share talking points we think are worth mentioning. And all this information, including links to the meetings, are on the website, which is imaginegirdwood.org.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jennifer.
Actually, am I allowed to ask a question about the, since we don't have it on the agenda, and because this is, but we don't have it on the agenda.
We probably should have done.
Sorry. I'm just, I'm just curious if you could also mention a little bit about the discussion and your take on the discussion about the whole density issues.
Yeah, so my take is that the number of Assembly members have delved deep into land use code, and they've alighted on one particular measurement, which is a density, the dwelling units per acre, which is a measure of density, which is in kind of traditional land use codes. And it's kind of a crude measure, and there are many criticisms of it. And what we, the project team in general, realize is that people in Girdwood don't necessarily care about how many doors there are, and how many front doors there are in a structure. They care about how that structure relates to, you know, what it impact has on drainage, what impact it has on vegetation, what effect it has on bushed, and things like this. It's not so much how many people live in the property, because, you know, not the secret is most property here doesn't have anyone living in it. So how, whether it's two units, one unit, or four units, probably doesn't actually have that much impact on, on, you know, the use of resources around it. But what, how the structure relates to the, to the lot and the land does have a bigger impact. So having, you know, large amounts of paved area around housing, for example, has probably a bigger impact on the, on the community drainage and on neighboring properties than whether it's a duplex or a single-family home. So consequently, what the comprehensive plan is proposed is a different way of doing land use that doesn't measure density in a traditional way at all. If you have a structure of a certain size, it could be a fourplex, or it could be a single-family home, it really isn't regulated. So the traditional measures of density don't work, and I think the, a lot of the Assembly members have got so tied to that particular measurement that they don't understand how to interpret whether we're making things better or worse. We're making things much better.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I was sitting, I did go through all that Imagine Girdwood meeting, so I'm, I'm clear on that, I'm a little, what I'm unclear on is how we get some.
Right. So that's the, so that's a good segment, that's right. I should have gone. So there are a couple of ways to do this. One of the things we were asked to do is, can you provide a memo that sort of describes this? The other way we might, the problem with a memo is kind of, in a formal way, the document itself will stand alone, and the memo might disappear. So what we're probably going to do, and I'm having this discussion with our Assembly members, is maybe introduce an S version, and that will include a little bit more detail in the document itself about what it means for density.
Thank you.
And that way we can, we can move, but we could also clear up a lot of things where there's agreement between Planning Department, Planning its own, and Girdwood, and just start with cleaners, do the next step with cleaner document.
Okay, excellent.
It's one of the proposals.
Thank you.
More on December the, on December the fourth.
Next is business, there's no other public comments. So vote number six, Girdwood Housing and Economic Plan, discussion or implementation from GHGC. So this is discussion and regulation.
Can I speak to this initially?
Yes.
I think the reason we moved this, one of the reasons we moved this December is, we originally thought we were gonna get a comprehensive plan passed in November.
Oh.
So we thought this would be about the good time to talk about it, because we'd have got parts of the comprehensive plan, and we hadn't. So what I'm gonna suggest is we push this to January, when hopefully we do have the comprehensive plan. One of the actions in the comprehensive plan is to move forward with the housing implementation or housing action plan. So I think it makes sense, we'll get more understanding of, of the Assembly view of what we're proposing, I think, during, during the process of adoption.
Okay, I'll entertain that as a motion.
It's a motion to postpone till January.
I'll stay.
Okay, Jennifer, seconds, and.
I'm sorry, I've already spoken.
This discussion has already previously been stated, so I think maybe nothing else is needed. And do you see a question in the group, online or a comment, Brett?
Thank you through the chair. Our last regular meeting at Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee was to vote against spending any of the funds towards this, and we already have a housing implementation plan that we had passed up the month prior to G-Boss, and then the body took it up again last meeting and voted against spending public funds to this end. So that was the latest action by the body. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Hold on, why consent? Is there any objection? Okay, the motion passes to see this item in January. Number seven, Agenda Item LUC twenty-four zero six dash zero four, request to pursue HLV municipal requirement to initiate a land use study in Girdwood. Who would like to give us status on this?
I can, or?
Okay. And I know that I, well, go ahead, Jennifer.
I was just gonna say that I think we all already, at least those of us that were, we were, the G-Boss board was at the meeting with MOA, and the HLV position at that point was that a land use study is not required. And so that is the, that is the stalemate that we are at, if that's the right word. That is the point at which we are at right now.
Right. Thank you. And I, and you probably stated that statement on land use.
Yes, I did.
Minutes there that it's not required. So is there any other discussion on this item? Do we need to have it on agenda? Next.
Okay, so one other thing, just in terms of, if, in case somebody hasn't viewed the LUC meeting, the LUC did have a lot of questions about this, and, you know, could we consider legal action or everything else, but it was my understanding that legal has looked at this, or that we've asked before in the past, and so I, I haven't, I can't think of another way to move, I don't know that we are, have a way that's warranted to move forward. So unless somebody else has a different opinion about that, it is true that we might be able to drop this off the agenda.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. Any other comments?
Well, actually, one comment to go in order. Do we have to actually do something positive to drop this on the agenda?
I, I don't know that formally, it seems like formally we should decide, well, I feel like, I don't have the right answer, but it's been on our agenda for months, and it might require a motion to remove it from the agenda, although that statement sounds like we found our answer, we found our answer at the MOA joint meeting. It was stated at land use, it's on land use agenda, it's on our agenda. We got the answer, can't really move forward in a way that our scope can.
So I agree with Jennifer, that I think we've got to the, we've got to the end of the line. We've got an answer now for the municipality, and we're part of the municipality, so we can't really go much further now. We are doing something similar, we are doing at least a land use plan update through the comprehensive plan, so I would move that we postpone it, postpone this item definitely, which is effectively dropping it from the agenda.
Since we moved, it was moved, you can have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All of us, Zach, thank you to the board for discussing that little detail, and that of course every month, the body decides what's agenda, so it works. Any objections to the motion on the floor? Why consent? When that motion passes to table and then postponed, yes.
Margaret. I think from a staff perspective, it would be really helpful if the Land Use Chair could come back with that information at Land Use, so that we close this, so that it doesn't continue going.
I hope Land Use Chair will try to remember that. I'll write myself a note.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. It's good to keep the circle.
Yeah.
Complete. Number eight, Agenda Item LUC twenty-four one zero dash zero four, request for LUC recommendation for GBOS resolutional support for watershed management plan for Girdwood. Jennifer, would you will have an update on this one?
Um. No, I don't have an update on this one.
Mike?
I, I can share my recollection. My recollection was, the advice was that we approach watershed, we actually speak to watershed management, and as, as the department, Kyle, I think, and, and see what the appropriate next steps will be. That's what I remember.
That's correct. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm actually having to refer to the, the minutes. I was, yes, yes. This seemed to be like an item that we might be talking with more with the current administration. We were kind of laying a lot on them that was new, so this is an ongoing no update item.
Okay. Now, that was our joint meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments on number eight? Go on, number nine.
Yeah, maybe same thing, it's, we're probably not gonna get a straight answer to the super class to this in the short term, so can we bring this back in January?
Yes, because the, excuse me.
Sure.
Sorry, but yes, because that is, I think, a good recommendation, because the other part of this was that we needed the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan in place.
Yeah.
For further discussions.
That's right. Yes, no.
So we've moved to postpone it to January?
Yes.
Or maybe the right thing to say is January warrants a comprehensive plan, just in case of this.
Yes.
Yes, all are in agreement in the room, we have mine opposition. If we're ready, you go to number nine. Agenda Item LUC twenty-four one zero dash zero five, request for LUC recommendation for GBOS resolutional support for extension of water mains on Girdwood and mine roads to be added to AWU project list. for extension of water mains, old Gerwood and mine roads to be added to A W F U project list.
So, um, I'm going to continue the theme here. So, uh, this was discussed at L U C, but it was discussed as new business. Uh, so L U C hasn't voted on it. Uh, there are set of questions about what does it mean in terms of less months and, uh, several other questions. So, uh, I'm working on those. Since L U C hasn't voted yet and it'd be good to get their, uh, thought feedback, I propose that we, uh, we postpone this till next month.
In the motion, did we postpone side of?
Second.
Second by Jennifer, discussion? I, I guess I would just ask there, sure, just clarify, there's no time sensitivity then, Mike, and we don't need to pass it based on hinging on their vote.
There was the recommendation early on process that, uh, we should do it before the end of the year. Um, and we are still planning to do it before the end of the year.
Any other discussion on the motion? I'll ask for feedback on this item or are there any objections to the motion to, uh, have this on our December agenda after L U C's this for their whole business? Hearing none, the motion passes. Number ten, Glacier Creek, California Creek, turning arm levy emptying old Gerwood.
I can take a look. So again, from the M O A meeting, they, we were told by H L B that they're working on a memo about this and if this is the is this the, um, continued so the reaction?
Yep, and, uh, we got the memo and so we're sharing it tonight, uh, from the H L B. And so it's, uh, basically the history of the, um, levy or the embankment as they call it and, um, and the background behind it and for the different people involved in all the years. It's actually a pretty interesting document. You see the history on it as far as it goes back, including pictures from, uh, March of sixty four, when the army was down here putting up, get to that real quick, uh, putting up sandbags to protect flooding in Old Town. And then the pictures here from, uh, nineteen fifty, when they actually built the, um, the embankment there, um, as part of the, uh, building of the, uh, uh, Seward Highway and the highway bridge out there. So, uh, basically, uh, I think the biggest takeaway that we saw from, um, the, uh, memo here is that, uh, there is nobody directly assigned to manage or maintain the levy or, or embankment. And that the M O A could request, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers to come out and do a courtesy inspection depending on their staff availability and time. And they can do inspection of the embankment there. And, and go through that and give assessment back to the municipality. But it still doesn't put anybody, uh, ultimately responsible for the maintenance of it. There are definitely some things called out in the sense that, uh, the heights and where it stands within the hundred year flood event. That most likely could top, uh, down there, um, in, in that aspect. Uh, but also the railroad would top anyways, anyways, because it has the same issues, um, uh, in that area. And then, um, you know, continue to do annual, uh, site visits down there, um, and then, uh, support G B O S if they desire to move forward, the possible courtesy of inspection and make it from, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers. So. So, uh, if anybody, I think maybe one thing this document showed is the Army Corps of Engineers may have been the longest involved with the levees in this area, uh, back to sixty four, when they came in to help fix the area or at least contain the flooding after, after that area significantly dropped during the sixty four earthquake. And then, you know, since then, uh, that embankment has lasted and then there's been work done on each side for the uh, the, uh, structures for the highway and the railroad. Uh, the railroad trestle is over a hundred years old, which is really interesting, um, down there, put in the nineteen twenties. And, uh, continues to be there and maintained. So, so, uh, but lots of good information this way and we, uh, I'm sorry, I got this on Thursday, but I was tied up with something else and I didn't realize it came in. And then I caught it today, so I sent it to your emails. So it should be in there. Yeah, I had just read it. Uh, but it's there for your review and in the packet tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any, um, thoughts or comments?
You go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things. The, the, the other thing I don't think you mentioned was the, uh, the, the platted right of way. Well, there is a platted right of way to the property there, but that's not what's being used.
Correct.
Is that?
Let me get down to.
Yeah, this is kind of noticed from the landowner. Does this mean we have to do anything or can we continue as we are now?
Well, what they would like to do is, um, if the service area wants to continue to use the top of the embankment as the right of way to these properties down there. And let me see if I can get to the plat, which is probably the last one here. Um, wants to use that, uh, and here you can see this is the east street. That is actually not developed. Um, the levy is up on, is up to the top of the page here and that's what's been developed as the roadway. So if we want to continue to have that be the roadway, then, uh, we should do an intergovernmental permit with H L B to allow us to maintain the surface for, um, vehicle access. Um, but it just still would make us responsible for, the service area wouldn't be responsible for the maintaining of the embankment. Um, so, so you can understand that when they built that embankment, they built a great road and ever since then it stayed a road. They actually used to go all the way out to Aliaska Highway, or excuse me, Seward Highway and had a gate out there. And then when they redid the bridge, that all got changed. Um, but, uh, so it's just been there and in the east street as they call it, has actually never been developed. So when you go down there, it looks like people actually have fairly large parcels, but that's because most, the, the seg, segment right next to the embankment is is unplatted or undeveloped right away.
So, um, so the development of the right of way, the right of way is still there.
Correct.
But the development to the right of way is not anybody's real responsibility.
Well, not the way the municipality typically works. Those usually get developed during, uh, the subdivision development.
Right.
In this case, they, they didn't develop that. They just went up and used the levy as their road.
Thing you said was that, uh, if there was an intergovernmental permit, that would be service area responsible for the embankment.
No. Just for the surface.
Surface, yeah.
So the road surface would be responsible for, but.
To what in the check?
Yeah, and I think that would have to be clear in it, you know, in that aspect, because especially once you start to get anything below medium high water, then we're dealing with core and, and state of Alaska and D N R issues. So. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a different issue right there.
Okay, Jennifer.
Um, so I apologize. I, I didn't see this coming today, but I, so I haven't had a chance to review it, but I, I would be interested in, um, sorry, but keeping this on the agenda for next time, because I think it does sound like we have a, unless the board wants to have a conversation now, if I'm the only one who didn't review this, about that suggestion about involving the Army Corps of Engineers with their discretion, but it's always worth asking, right? The answer's always no if you don't ask. So, uh, I'm just curious about the book.
Um, thank you, Jennifer. I, in quickly looking it over and hearing the, uh, summary this evening, I feel like because this is something we've had on our agenda, that would be an act that I feel comfortable making is asking the Army Corps to, at their availability voluntarily inspect it because the sooner we ask, maybe they can do it. Not, it sounds like complimentary. So. That's my comment. Thank you.
The, the, the question I would have is if they inspect it and come back with a set of problems, what happens then? So, you know, by asking the question, we know the answer. And it's then a question of, you know, do, does somebody have an obligation to act? What's the difference? So there may be some, there may be a downside, there may not be. But I'd like some clarity on that before we. So what I would suggest is we, we bring back an item specifically, these two different issues, one, one being the right of way, one being, one being a discretionary inspection.
We have a, yeah, Jennifer.
Yeah, so I have a question about that. And if, if you have a suggestion, Mike, about how we find the answer to that question, because it says in the document that basically we're no idea who owns it or has responsibility for it. So I'm not sure we're going to get an answer to that question before we.
I think the, the, the con, the concern I have is that if we ask for inspection, the answer from the discretionary inspection is there are these known problems. Then we've, we've moved the conversation on in a way that we're potentially, we haven't accepted liability. But we've accepted an interest and we're raising these issues. So it kind of accelerates the set of problems we have to deal with. I, I want, what, I would want to make really clear that by asking this, we're not accepting any responsibility or fixing any negative information you get. Now, that's probably, you know, there's probably just a way you ask for it, but I think that would be a question initially, I think, for H L B. Um, if they've reached out to Army Corps, or maybe we should reach out to Army Corps and ask that same question.
I think we keep it with H L B for now.
Yeah.
And, uh, see what they say. I, I see, I think you presented that question to them today, so they haven't had a chance. I don't think there's any reason to have action tonight. I think you, you could take time to read the document. Any questions you have, you could send to me and I can try to get answers for it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, as I understand what the document is saying, H L B is basically asking, does G boss want to give us the direction for us to ask? So it's really actually not us asking, it's H L B asking. So I think that there's I think that there's a screen of responsibility there which comes through H L B.
Correct. Sorry, just.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Again, should not.
The, um, I don't know, we have to, but even though there's a change of agenda, but I, what I'd probably do is, um, recommend that we bring back a specific agenda writing for whatever question next time. We'll get the answers in the meantime and then maybe we'll make an action at the meeting, um, formally requesting.
And then Brett, you had your hand, you have your hand ups.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you. So I feel the need to share that we did include this in the, uh, total grant package that we submitted was a reconstruction of the entire levy. You know, materials to be sourced as, uh, studied, uh, if that whole grant package did come together. So I know it's a hail Mary, but just so everybody's aware, um, that if that grant did come through, then it does have a significant portion of the funds allocated to rebuilding of this structure for flood prevention.
Thank you. No reminder, that information. No more questions or comments? Oh, yes.
Is it going to be on the website, G boss website, my light rating tonight?
It's in there right now.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, add it to the packet. Okay, thank you again staff for that. So now we are on to the number eleven. Review and discuss G B O S rules and procedures edits work session scheduled December tenth at three P M. I think that's just a reminder to keep this on. Seems like every meeting we have another, uh, suggested item to add to this. Okay, any comments on this? Seeing none. Number twelve, review letter requesting to catch electric underground power lines in town squares.
Yeah. If I, if I may, um, I don't know that I am eligible to review this, uh, this letter.
Okay, uh, with the board remarking, we already made ruling on this.
Did we?
We did.
Yes.
I thought it was just while it was new business.
Oh, actually, right. We did, we did.
We, we talked about it as new business, but now, now we're in it as old business. And I think we should, um, determine if I'm eligible.
Okay, so your disclosure, um, was, is now needed to be ruled on and my first question would be, do you feel comfortable discussing and coming to conclusion about this item?
I do, yes. Feel comfortable.
And do you feel that you could keep, um, your perspective and communities, us who and support rather than your personal on your personal potential conflict?
I'm going to say, I'm going to say no. I think that, that my personal, um, that my personal preference could potentially um, interfere with that decision I would make.
Okay, thank you. I think Margaret's getting the official questions. Should we could ask and then? Okay. I'll have these over. Wait for you. Start with. Please provide a detailed description of your interest.
I will, uh, my, my fiancee owns a piece of property and a business that will be affected, um, by undergrounding the power lines in town square.
And is this interest financial or personal?
Financial and personal.
And if the interest is financial, what is the size of the interest?
Consider.
Okay, and who holds the interest?
My fiancee.
When did the interest arise?
Uh, with, with my pending wedding.
This is to allow us to determine whether the interest was in the past, ongoing or in the future.
I think it affects some of the dinners that I'm about to have.
Okay, how does the matter before the body impacts the interest? Specifically, is the interest a substantial part of the matter under consideration?
Um, not necessarily.
Does the impact on the interest directly vary the outcome of the official action?
Yes.
And is the impact on the interest immediate or conjectural?
Conjectural.
And the last one I tried to say earlier, but do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest of the, on the official action above your private interest?
To that, what I'm going to say, no, it won't.
And do you believe you should be excused from participation in the official action on this matter?
Yes, I do feel I should be excused from official action. I would appreciate the chance to, um, opine on, uh, on, on the review.
Okay, thank you. Uh, based on your last statement that you would like to be excused, I would rule that you are excused from deliberating on this item. And anyone from the body is welcome to check to that. There are no objections for any excuse from number.
Thank you.
Well, so thank you everyone for indulging. And Mike, would you like to?
It's going to be very brief. There are not two interrelated issues, um, on this. Uh, one is the general vote of, um, undergrounding, which is a general request that you might take years um, to put up, to put, uh, undergrounding, I tell this, of their, this undergrounded projects. And the second thing which has come up is, um, turns out that the power lines along that section actually approach beyond easement and causes direct conflict between our land use code and, uh, the easement conditions. And that's kind of a bigger issue. And what I'm trying to determine at the moment is whether that affects just one property only. If it affects one property only, I'm not sure it's our position to it. If it affects multiple, then what is our position to interfere? Because it's, uh, it's affecting the cost and difficulty and really the just legal possibility of doing, uh, of doing any development in that area. So I have a meeting, uh, early next week to sort of get to follow that particular question. But consequently, I've got, I've got a draft letter and I have, I have fun. I still share it yet because I'm trying to get the, the answer to the second part uh, answered as well. So basically no action tonight.
Thank you for all of your work on that, Mike. Uh, any questions, temper? Yes, Jennifer.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, would there be an argument for, uh, dissecting that?
Yeah, potentially.
You're just not sure yet.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll look forward to next month. Uh, item number thirteen, agenda item L U C twenty four zero seven, G B O S action on service area S T R regulation and registration. Lots of names here. Would like to start.
I'll start with a couple of things. So, um, this is one of the, there's a new planning director, as I think we mentioned last time, uh, Melissa. She's, uh, there's several things coming. Obviously, we have the comprehensive plan going through now. We're planning, we're just about to have the, um, well, actually they're in the process of, uh, drafting and ordinance for the change. Uh, we requested to, um, G C one and two to allow mixed use, uh, under the current code. Um, that passed planning and zoning and the A O is being written for, send the introduction soon. Uh, and then there's going to be a whole bunch of activity beyond that, many of them coming from the comprehensive plan, but short term, the rental regulation being another. And, uh, what Melissa requested is, um, we have a kind of discussion with, uh, with planning. As the board has discovered, at least, you know, some of us have been going to have a discussion just about the process of getting through this. And, uh, that's been, I've been trying to get something on the schedule with her and, uh, she, before I spoke to her earlier today, and she informed me that. she, before I spoke to her earlier today, and she informed me that, that, you know, early January. So we can have a meeting there and that set up the process because there's a couple of ways we can do this kind of thing, as we've discovered. We can't initiate it ourselves under the current interpretation from the, from the law department. We can do it through assembly members or we can do it, um, through the planning department. But we just have to sort of get a read onto what the right path is. But I think the appropriate way to do this, and definitely the way we recommend, we'd recommend is to try and do this in a collaborative way to start off with. The second update, um, terms of timing is at the beginning of January. The, um, the ordinance that was passed a couple of months ago to enhance the reporting requirements for short term rental platforms, so Airbnb, et cetera, via V A. Um, they will now have to report, as of the first of January, they will have to report back to the municipality. How many, well, at the end of each quarter, they will give monthly, data monthly on how much tax was remitted, um, by short term rentals in each zip code within Anchorage and how many listings were active during that month for each zip code in Anchorage. So in early April, we will receive, um, detailed equitable data to say how much short term rental tax was paid by government properties. And that ties into one of the questions that came in earlier about the money that tax being generated. We won't have an answer there completely because we won't know what hotel side is, hotels side is, but we will know what short term rental is. And that's part of the argument about, uh, you know, how that money can be best spent to, uh, to mitigate the the consequences of a large number of short term community. So that's, uh, that's just something else I'll add. So, you know, we can definitely go down this path sooner than January, but I think the right, the right thing politically and cooperatively is to, is to have that meeting and decide on a path then of how we go down the short term rental regulations. And then within a couple of months of that, we should actually start having real data, build up this rather than guess as we're doing that.
Ooh, Jennifer.
Right, so I noticed during the, uh, kind of noted in my head during the meeting with the M O A about that basically it was a request with, to the board that we'd meet with them, although it might not be uh, to the best advantage to have that be the full board just at this point, but have some people, it's probably the easiest. But I did want to kind of formally request to be a part of that meeting as someone who's on, um, the, who's the L U C supervisor. And then also I'd like to also request that we have some members, if at all possible, from G H T C, uh, so that we kind of have as many brains as possible in the room without making it large formal meeting. I think if we could at least have three or four people there, that would be a great advantage.
Agreed. The purpose, this is, it's an administrative thing about processes.
Sure.
It's not a public meeting, it's just an administrative thing about processes and bringing information back from that.
Right.
Decide on the best part, so I agree. I think you and I make my sense from the, uh, from the board and at least one or two people from G H T C.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you, well, Brett.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add, um, that, you know, the real impetus was to get them, uh, registered, those participating in that land use activity. And then, um, I, I think that the impact still continues to neighbors who might have issues with certain properties. Um, that was one of the driving goals of seeing this type of registration and at this type of um, accountability for this land use. Um, and that was the impetus for short term rental registration. So I would hope that we wouldn't lose that um, by just waiting to gather more data because we do have all of the data from those who have been operating as short term rentals, um, uh, through various, uh, things. Those are all, of course, published on the matrix from the Housing and Economic Committee, uh, website. So, um, we have a good indication and we've already chosen to kind of move ahead. I would just caution against delaying, um, just to wait for even more data um, because the damage still continues, so to speak, or that impact still continues. So, um, I think we're probably in a good position to move ahead with it since there was no action by the assembly and administration. I think that, um, it was very clear under land use, uh, title 21, chapter nine, that there was a viable path for that. Um, and so I just don't see necessarily a reason to continue to delay. But thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you for your comment. I have a question for Mike and Jennifer that you have a timeframe on the next two weeks.
That was, that was what, uh, that was what the communication was.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? It will move to you, number 14, agenda item L U C 2408-04, G B S resolution on proposed 3% means sales tax. Thanks, and Jennifer.
I don't want to speak for you, is, are you wanting to keep this active tonight? Okay.
Yeah, um, I, I'm looking forward to hearing, thanks to the chair, looking forward to hearing some more information from kind of, um, Gerwood Inc. and the other project to the end. For what it's worth, the assembly's proposed, I think 11 projects from A D C, it seems, or so, give or take. And there's gonna narrow the list down from what I understand to four plus maybe two additional projects, smaller scale. So, um, just as a note, I think it's important that we are ready on this because, uh, the likelihood of Gerwood not receiving any funding for any capital projects of that 1% seems to be increasingly high, unfortunately, despite everyone's best efforts. So that's all I want to add. So I look forward to the conversation on the new business, which I think is more productive for the community and positive than.
Okay. Uh, sorry, thank you, Bryce.
And I don't have anything to add about that. I kind of wanted, um, I don't know the word for, point of order, question. I just wanted to acknowledge Kyle Holland in the room, and I didn't know if, wanted to say, um, as an incoming representative. Uh, anyway, just wanted to acknowledge, thank you for the.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And I was, I think now between old business and new business would be a good opportunity for any, uh, if we're finished with number 14. Uh, hi, do we have reports earlier? Anywhere in the room yet? I'll take this opportunity, if you'd like to give any time to a presentation of this. Usually we do our senators, assembly, so if you'd like to say.
Briefly, um, I, um, just appreciated all the support and the involvement I've had with Gerwood over the last, I guess, six months now, five months of coming to meetings and getting spun up on issues. And I'm starting to understand pieces of most of the issues, but not all of the depth of that. So I'm looking forward to more. The organizing at this point has gotten started. I'll be co-chairing the energy, um, committee at this point with a specific request that really dived into the Cook Inlet gas, um, but also rail belt related energy. So it'll be a focus area. Um, there's another committee I'll be getting involved in, and that one is still being sorted out in terms of the scope of that, but it'll be a new special committee and more about that one. You should, if that's sorted out. I'm also planning on working with the, um, labor and commerce and the transportation committees. Uh, transportation was an area that particularly became important as I looked at all the issues going on in this district from the ferries and the railroad issues, um, down Whittier to the Safeway Highway project going on through this whole corridor, as well as the wildfire issues around access in the roads, including Grove Creek, um, that goes up into an isolated area. So a lot of organizing at this point, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I am starting to collect up a lot of the C I P information. So any of that, I've got a lot of notes on that on the road. If specifically you have any legislative priorities, um, or C I P priorities, um, I think I know some of that, but that would be an invitation to you between now and, uh, the middle of January to help me make sure I'm up to speed on what you'd like to see as a focus. That could be a special separate discussion at some point or just a topic, maybe, uh, in the future. If it works with the schedule, it's gonna be pretty dicey. Uh, I'll be heading down into January and the session starts on the 21st. So happy to answer any questions if there are any. Um, so it's kind of more of a update, like I'm being online once I'm down there in terms of staying up to date with it.
Hey, thank you very much, Kyle. Uh, we have a question, Brian?
First of all, congratulations. Um, second of all, um, are you in town on December 17th?
On the Tuesday.
Tuesday, December 17th?
Yes, I am.
If you have the opportunity, it'd be great to see you, uh, attend the assembly meeting when we discuss the Gerwood Comprehensive Plan.
Oh, that would be important, yeah, that's been a really vital issue. Yeah, that, that'll work.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you for letting me know about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, move on to business. Yes, a master planning towards Gerwood Parks. I am. Nice call.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, this is the draft, uh, R F P proposal for, uh, master planning for Gerwood Parks. And, um, this, uh, plan, uh, is here to present to you tonight as an introduction and give you a chance to read through this. I'm hoping in December we can, uh, get the board's approval to move forward. At that point, I will bring along, um, some, uh, cost estimates for project management and then, um, relative cost estimates based on plans that have been done here in the recent years for how much it costs to get the plan completed. So I'm working through those now. Uh, but this gives you a, a scope of work for what we're looking to complete. And, uh, basically, we're looking to come up with, uh, alternative proposals for all the different, uh, park parcels. Um, and, and, and quickly what those are is Moose Meadows Park, um, uh, which includes Aliaska Playing Field, uh, Gerwood Park, Lions Club Park, Town Square Park, um, and then also recognize possible future park lands um, that the community might be interested in, uh, selecting to, uh, turn over to Gerwood Parks and Rec Management. Um, in particular, like one area, I'll give example is the 5K corridor, um, up in that area. So, uh, this just is a way for us to have a better planning document to find out what the community wants to do with their parks for the future. And then from there, we can work off that to develop those wishes, um, as we move forward, you know, for the next 10 to 20 years, uh, develop the parks. Right now, we don't have any standing document. And so we get a lot of interest groups that come and talk about what they want in the park, but we don't really have a sense of what the community wants. Um, so this will help us identify that. Um, and they do this with all the individual park parcels in Anchorage. And what we're doing here in the service area, instead of doing, uh, planning for each park parcel, they want to include all our park parcels and, uh, get it done in, in, uh, in one document so that we can work for that for the future. So, so, um, we took this R F P from, uh, a template that they use for Town. So we modified it to, uh, Gerwood here and, um, and, and made it work that way. So, so I'll open up any questions, but I'd like for you to read over it for the next, you know, month. And if you've got any questions, feel free to give me a call and, um, we can talk more about it.
Any questions during meeting, Alex? Great, thank you. Mike, or do you have a comment, Brian?
No, no comment.
Uh, one quick question. Um, does this include, um, discussions about, will this include potentially whether we dedicate some areas which are not currently dedicated?
Uh, it, it, yes, it can. So as part of the actions, um, you know, because we have a lot of also what's called, uh, park reserve green belts. Um, and sometimes our parks have now, uh, grown into more functioning parks and they're really were, were green belts. So we could talk about more dedication on all of those parcels, so.
Thank you.
And that can be an action of what comes out for each park, uh, that'd be one of the actions to be completed.
There are questions for Kyle? Comments? Anything on the line? Hands, oh, sorry.
Uh, I just have a recommendation that we call it, um, Gerwood Park Natural Resource and Recreation Facility Plan. That Anchorage, that's what Anchorage calls theirs. It's Anchorage Bull Park Natural Resource and Recreation Facility Plan. Um, and then all of their more specific plans fall under that plan. And I kind of think like this is, because the open space stuff was left out of the Trails Plan. And then, and then now the area plan, we were told you can't identify, uh, like where your parks are gonna be in the area plan. And so now we're trying to do the Parks Plan, but I kind of feel like they're, they're grouping them all together there and maybe it makes sense for us to do it that way as well. So something to consider, um, they call it Park Natural Resource and Recreation Facility Plan.
So just to, on that point with, and I think what you're making the point there is to include the open spaces in this plan. We specifically pulled that out because I feel like that's such a, such a, uh, emotional hot topic that that should be done on its own. And here we're looking particularly at the park parcels that are used specifically for recreation um, uses in the sense of like playgrounds and different features along those. And so, um, because I had that discussion with Mike about putting the open space in there. Um, but it is, a lot of that land is land that we actually don't directly manage. It's in our H L B inventory, so it's not under our management. Um, whereas these parcels here are directly under our management. So I thought that that could be done as a separate plan. And, um, you know, it could be identified that maybe some of these green open spaces could be developed in the future. Um, but all of it, uh, within the way that comprehensive plan wouldn't be managed by Gerwood Parks and Rec in the future.
Thank you.
I'll make one brief comment to that. Yeah, so open space is this kind of weird thing of, it is, it's, um, within the comprehensive plan, land is dedicated to open space. Um, and then there's a set of, there's effectively a small set of things that could be done, um, on open space land. Um, but then what follows from this is zoning, which can be much more restrictive and could actually say, nothing can be done with this particular land. With the exceptions of some states that, exceptionless. Um, and I think that's quite different from, um, as Kyle said, I, I agree with where Kyle added on this. That the, um, what we're talking about is things that are a little bit more organized, a little bit more structured than the sort of open space discussion where we actually want, where people in the community want no development of any sort. So, and some stuff sits aside that trails, but, uh, so the, the comprehensive plan does allocate open space and does dedicate things to open space. But this, this would partly solve some of the problems we're having with future paths being marked on the open, on the, uh, comprehensive plan as well. I'm supporting that discussion next one.
Okay, thank you. Go to 16, agenda item L U C 2411-06, requests for L U C recommendation for G B S resolution support for 10 year community council boundary change, merge Portage Valley Community Council into Turnigan Arm Community Council.
There's, I'll speak to this, there's a lot of information in the packet. Um, there's, there's really three things that, there's, um, this has been a multi-year project uh, to, um, to look at community council boundary changes. There were about 40 or 50 suggestions made at the beginning of the project. Um, a group was put together consisting mainly of, um, representatives from community councils, um, called the Boundary Studening Group, uh, with support from planning to look through each of these, to take testimony from, um, from the community council involved. And they made a recommendation for each of the 40, uh, 40 odd, I think just over 40, uh, recommendations. And they came up with, I think, about 10 or so changes. There are three which affect us, one of which is not a change. Um, so the recommendation for Gerwood is no change the way we do things now. Uh, there is this, uh, odd thing, number 40, where they're just adjusting the tideland boundaries. I honestly don't understand what that means. I don't understand why. Um, I've got a question to plan on, uh, what this means practically. There is some concern in parts of Anchorage where that tideland area is used for buried gas lines and things like that, uh, where potentially this area comes out of community councils and the community would therefore have less say on future use of, um, gas lines, for example, in Thailand. Doesn't affect us. Uh, so number four is basically keep values as we are. Number 40 is this smaller technical adjustment to tidelands. And then the other thing that's relevant to our general area is Portage Valley had its own separate community council. They haven't met for about 15 or 20 years. Um, so one of the suggestions from the Boundary Commission was to merge Turnigan Arm, uh, which is basically Bird Indian River, um, and Portage into one single community council. So, um, planning, looking for a, basically all community councils to, um, to give a resolution of either support or not support for any part of this, but taking the future to them. But so in our case, we're effectively asking L U C if they're supportive of these changes or, and not changes. And then we're asking ourselves the same thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, for covering this and keeping up with this for many months during this process. And I know that it's new business, so it'll be there for L U C and we have a draft resolution. And I know that it's new business, so it'll be there for L U C and we have a draft resolution. Any comments, Brian?
Yeah, I have a comment. That's, that's interesting. You mentioned about the, the tidal boundary and, and what's, how, how it's being adjusted around potential, you know, sort of corridors from moving gas or electricity. Does the move have any impact on the, um, transmission lines like along the Seward Highway? And, um, you know, just to the north of Gerwood.
I don't know. It's a good question.
You know, I, I wonder if, I wonder if the movement has placed, has put the, the power line on one side or the other.
It looks like the, uh, the chambers north of Gerwood are wrapped by the points and the plats.
Yeah.
That's where the power line is.
Yep, exactly.
So probably that's in that particular case, but it's a good question.
Yeah, but it would be interesting to know if, if anything has, um, and if there, if there are any easements out there lurking that we don't know about that are right in the, in the tidal area.
That's a good question. We can definitely ask that at planning.
Yeah.
Other. Thank you again. Go to the next item. This is the P S A C and agenda item, L U C twenty-four eleven dash zero seven, that recommendation for G B S resolution of support for traffic calming and speed reduction on Aliaska Highway. This is under Kelly's supervisor role and, uh, debated. Kelly, rejoin us. Unit Kelly.
I don't see her. Actually, the top, yeah.
Uh, Patty, you could go ahead and be let.
Um, um, yeah, can, uh, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Hold on, Kelly is unmuted now. So Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, you guys. I just had really unstable service there for a second, but I'm moving. Um, but I think Patty is the better person to speak to it anyhow, so I'm just going to give her the floor.
Hey, go ahead, Patty.
All right. Thank you. I won't take too much of your time since it has been a long meeting already and it senses just new business and being introduced. So basically what I'm doing, um, we went to P S A C and L U C, L U C here for the first time. P S A C, um, gave a, um, letter of support to reduce the speedway along Aliaska Highway on the lower portion of it down to thirty to match what's up on the upper bud. Uh, the main, those main three, three main reasons on, you know, have come for requesting this. One is, um, the swoops. I know that there was significant challenges trying to get those fixed and D O T doesn't have the money, totally understand, but from a safety perspective, they're really, really are dangerous. Um, dropping the speed limit will help that. On the Aliaska, they narrowed the highway. They did the work, so um, it is exceptionally dangerous when you're coming out of your driveways now. Um, they also don't clear, state doesn't clear the berms very well. And you can't see over them and you can't go into the drive, can't go into Aliaska Highway too far, otherwise you'll get hit. Um, and also when I contacted the, the Department of Transportation, they said they did a study on Aliaska Highway and found that people are as well as the forty-five down here, probably upwards to sixty miles an hour, which is really crazy when you think about all of the driveways. Um, and then the last one is to try to go forth for some traffic calming, wear either tickets or some flashing signs or something that slows people down. Lastly, Crow Creek has been having a number of problems while as people cruise up forty, forty-five miles an hour, they make a left onto Crow Creek, they're not slowing down there either, and they're still keeping up the same speed up to Double Musky. So, um, it does, this has garnered large support in P S A C as well as L U C, but again, L U C has not voted on it yet. I'm, I can take questions if you.
Thank you, Patty. Any comments or questions immediately? I'm just looking over the resolution for the first time and thank you so much for bringing this to P S A C and Land Use already. I have no other questions or comments. We look forward to, uh, December.
Okay, thank you. And there might be some changes. Margaret had some recommendations that, you know, from a money perspective, we, you know, from the calming, trying to separate those out. And I will be, um, I'm, I'm looking at that and then maybe even putting in there about not actually painting the double lines. I'm, I'm a little surprised that this is not, that this is a passing area out here on Aliaska Highway instead of, um, and it needs to be double lined instead of allowing passing to.
Thank you for that initial information. That's helpful. Anything else on this side? Okay, thank you. Go to Project Anchorage, agenda item L U C twenty-four eleven dash three eight, Gerwood Arts and Recreation Project. Go.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, I will start with a little bit of background. Um, on June seventeenth, uh, Jenna Ray with A T E, um, A T E C came and gave a presentation about Project Anchorage at the Gerwood Board of Supervisors Meeting. And, um, from there, I started working with a working group. Um, Jen is here with me, who has been collaborating on, uh, this project. And, uh, we started putting together a, a package that we felt like was a good representation of Gerwood and where Gerwood's strengths are and where we want to see um, additional investment. We landed on the Gerwood Arts and Recreation District. And it had, it's made up of several components. I think some of the components have been discussed heavily in the community. It had possibly even been voted upon. Um, but there are components that are new, um, and were bringing to the, this to the table as new business. Um, I then, after the project was kind of mostly put together, presented it at the September ninth Gerwood Housing and Economic Committee, followed by this September ninth Gerwood Land Use Committee Meeting. And, uh, the packet presentation was, or sorry, the presentation was in both packets of both of those meetings. And, um, so we submitted our package, um, to Project Anchorage and then it was kind of a wait and see what happens situation. We found out that our project was being considered by Project Anchorage by listening to the Assembly Work Session is how we found out. And, um, and then we reached out to Project Anchorage and asked if they needed anything more. They felt like our project, uh, submission was pretty comprehensive and they didn't need anything further at that time. Um, basically in a nutshell, this is a placemaking project. Um, and that it's really trying to incorporate artists' thing part in our community. I do see Gerwood as being an artistic and creative community. I think we've got existing, um, groups here that have bolstered that. Uh, so I think I also provided some examples of how artists can impact economies. So I'm taking the approach that both art and recreation are components of our economy here as, as this project is put together. So, um, part of it includes a pump track. Uh, Gerwood Community Land Trust had submitted a request for information on what to do with the town cell, South Townsite Parcel Six dash zero seven six. We received a response back from a, uh, a civil landscape, um, professional estimator. And he has built two, two, um, pump tracks for specialized, the bike company. And so I felt like that was something that Gerwood has expressed interest in wanting before. And there's definitely documented evidence of it in meetings, um, when you search on the community dot org under Gerwood. So I took things like that, things that, that I know have been discussed in, in Gerwood, but we never had the ability to fund them because nothing passes for bonds. So I was taking the requests or taking the approach of like, what, what I packaged together that we've always wanted, that we could never get funded. And so if you continue further down, um, of course, the R V Park is the, is a big component on it. This is ways in which artists impact communities. Go and keep scrolling. Um, this is the parcel that is, uh, next to the ball field in between, um, Carriolus and, uh, California Creek. And then six dash one three four is the parcel that's on the river. So we were suggesting the pump track on six dash zero seven six cabins, a three D sculpture walk and bike ride. And then on six dash one three four, the R V Park. Um, yep, let's just keep going. Um, I feel like this builds off of the existing assets that are already in place around the community. So it just kind of increases this recreation district and I would like to see more of an arts component, um, go into the district. Keep going down. Um, so of course, we're many steps out on if this were even to become a possibility, but we've made one step forward since the last time that this was presented to you guys. So trying to keep you updated, the, um, we'll find out if we are in fact on, on, if it's going to move forward on the ballot or not in January. If it is on the ballot, it'll show up in April. Um, keep scrolling down. We're suggesting we would be building these, you know, in the coming years. Of course, we're going to learn about how, how the funding is works, you know, and, and, um, how projects would be kind of prioritized. I think it's yet to be determined. Um, but we have talked to, um, stakeholders in the art community and I would like Jen to talk about that when I, when I wrap up a little bit more. Um, keep going down. This is our mission. Um, Alaskans have been sort of enjoyed a wide spe, a wide spectrum of arts and related recreation in a community known for embracing creativity in the natural environment. Scroll down. Of course, this was all put together for the Project Anchorage submission. Um, and I feel like there is still flexibility to how this ends up. Um, but we do envision some of these cabins being used for artist residency. Um, I'm interested in, in one, being available for emergency uses and also to be able to do long-term rentals, um, in them for workforce. So I feel like there, we're trying to just solve several problems with this large project. Going down. Um, these are some of the art groups that Jen is communicating with. It's probably a good time for you to hop in and talk about, uh, your outreach to them so far.
Hi, I'm Jen McCombs, uh, Box seven two seven, Gerwood Global, in Hoover. Um, I am working with Crystal and a few community members on a new group called the Gerwood Arts Council. Um, the mission that she stated just a moment ago is what we're working on, which really is kind of the same, creating more creative space or place macing, place making for Gerwood. Um, I've been speaking with local groups, including Gerwood Center for Visual Arts, Four Valleys Community Center, schools, um, Aliaska and Gerwood Inc., Roundhouse. And Gerwood, the G C B A, their big issue or call for action was just to allow more art space for cultural space in the community. Um, they welcome that. Um, Four Valleys, one of their big needs is more space for, uh, programs, uh, with limits with school ability based on the school, um, scheduling. Um, Aliaska is open to potentially working with us to provide a thousand squits, a thousand square feet in their projected community center or their, uh, big conference center that they're working on. Um, Gerwood Inc. has shown part of their mission or vision is to have more cultural representation at the valley, the base of the mountain. We have Roundhouse, which is a museum and a cultural, um, asset for Gerwood. It's a longstanding business, um, including all these other ones, as we know, have done for decades in the community, um, all doing their work in the area of the arts. And now we're calling for, uh, a need for more space for art making and place making in the community, um, as we also engage in recreation. Um, really thinking for seasons, allowing more things to do, um, for people that are coming to our valley, uh, to, you know, enjoy their time with their family, but aren't able to ski, you know, that kind of thing. Um, tourists, educational groups, um, really just enhancing the economic, um, enhance what's coming into Gerwood. Um, yeah, and so really looking at promoting art more, uh, with working with all these groups, uh, together with kind of using the Gerwood Art Council to facilitate this message and work on the space with all of them.
Uh, if you keep scrolling down, we'll just, um, finish out kind of some other slides that were incorporated into the, um, proposal. So, or, you know, we're proposing eleven cabins. They would be built locally by, um, a builder here in Gerwood. When, one cabin has already been built, as an example, and priced out. Um, the proposal includes utilities, bringing the water line down, um, Carriolus and, uh, to, to a point, not the entire thing. Um, and also, uh, the sewer, the sewer line that needs to go in, sewer line extensions that would need to go in on both sides. Um, so seven hundred feet, six hundred feet of those water, uh, water line and sewer line. Um, these are just some conceptual pictures of what our pump track could look like. This is, uh, inspiration image of what like a cabin neighborhood can look like. It would need to be more Title twenty-one than that, but hopefully less Title twenty-one than, um, what's in code. Um, if you scroll down, that's the actual picture of the proposed cabins that have been built. Um, they're beautiful inside. If you scroll down, you can see it's like real timber frame. So of course you can get cabins for a little bit cheaper than seventy thousand apiece, but I think that these are high quality and they will last and they, and because they're timber framed, probably easier to move. Um, but they're kind of like, they're just, they're high quality and I think that they would make a really cute neighborhood. Um, so then this is, oh, so now, um, what I was doing and while presenting, you know, while compiling my ideas of what to package together, also presenting at these meetings and then also taking the feedback from the meetings, I was trying to create this package deal where I would, you know, some of the money was coming towards art purposes and some of the money was going to Gerwood Parks and Rec. And so I had talked to Kyle about where he thought that we would use money and he had provided some examples like the skate park and the dog park and, um, so I am definitely open to flexibility. He, and hope it's not, I hope it's okay, Kyle. Kyle and I talked about the possibility that, um, the R V Park, the Dog Park and the Pump Track could possibly all go on six dash one three four. So I think that there's plenty of flexibility as far as like where exactly they go. If it goes on one parcel versus the other, like I'm totally open to that. Um, but just wanted to show you like what got submitted and what they're considering. Um, and I, you know, there's no shortage of ways that we would like to spend money, but creating a capital fund, you know, seed money would be super helpful. Um, keep scrolling down. These are just some, that's the Taku Lake Skate Park they just built in town. Um, I think that many of our Gerwood grongs would love a bowl, so I'm interested in pursuing that as an option. Keep going down. Um, these are, this is something that Kyle was in, in, um, interested in pursuing would be drainage projects and improved parking at the ball field. Keep going down. And then this is the budget that I put together, um, with how the money would be allocated. Uh, Gerwood Inc. did vote on Wednesday to become the fiscal sponsor for the project, should it, should it move forward. Um, both Gerwood Inc. and myself are being very neutral about the tax itself, but we want to make sure that Gerwood is in the running should the tax be approved. So the total package is just over seven million dollars. And that's the summary and I am happy to take questions and understand this is new business and I'll be back before you guys again next month. And it, it does seem like there's going to be many meetings, um, before the assembly makes a decision.
Thank you, Jen and Crystal, for your presentation being here. Try to see on the big screen. Mine was off the top online. Get earlier. Any comments or questions from the board?
Uh, one, well, two questions. And one is, did you get any, having submitted this project, did you get any feedback at all, any indication about how they were selected? Because that's been very, very opaque.
Um, we did get a response back that they had received three proposals from Gerwood that were all, all art related. So they saw art as being a need in Gerwood was like my initial response that we got that within the first week of submitting, I think, is when we got that email. And so we're like, okay, but we didn't know who the third one was, you know, and, uh, or, or like how many there were from Gerwood. Like, we don't know any of those questions, um, or answers, I suppose. Um, just that this is the project that they're considering, which obviously I'm really excited about. And I think that there's a huge benefit to Gerwood and, and what we're trying to bring to the table here. And I do think that there is flexibility to change things. Like if we find out the community hates one component of it, I do think that there is room to change it. Um, but I think that so far, it meets a lot of needs.
Well, we don't got a comment, but this, this might sound cynical, but it's actually not cynical. Um, it's not meant to be cynical. Um, I think this next piece of marketing, because, um, one thing you can guarantee, people in Anchorage think Gerwood needs is something like this. Um, whatever it actually covers. So I, I appreciate definitely the, the inclusion of more recreation facilities than the title implies. So, uh, I think this is a, this is working. These seem to be working very much to our advantage as a community. I'm not sure if that's, I think it's played well into the way these projects probably were selected.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I saw that as cynical. I think it's. I don't know that I saw that as cynical. I think it's like, yes, we, well, I mean, if a lot of it is recreation, which is like,
Right, exactly. Yeah.
I brought that to the table in September, you know?
I mean, what the project actually contains is what we want, but it's because of the labeling of it, I can see how it attracted probably the people making the selection in the first place.
Oh, right.
That's what I meant. So.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I think that like this is a, uh, the project that's being considered. So I was at the Assembly Work Session for Project Anchorage and then had eight projects listed on the draft AO. And they were the Ship Creek Riverwalk Indoor Market and Food Hall, which I think is a very cool idea. Uh, and then they have, but then they've got projects that are kind of like bonded pro, you know, projects that we would normally bond for, which is Anchorage Snow Removal Equipment Fleet, one-time overhaul. And then they've got East Anchorage Sports and Nordic Aquatic Complex. And they have Anchorage Public Safety Vehicle Fleet, one-time overhauls with nuclear vehicles. And then municipal, municipality-wide four seasons trail facilities. And then downtown arts and entertainment redevelopment. And then Girdwood Arts and Recreation District. And then Girdwood, or sorry, Eagle River Sports and Recreation Facility. So they do have one in various parts of Anchorage. Um, and then definitely two projects that would normally be bonded for, but are being tossed into here. Um, and then they also had two supplemental projects of Chester Creek Sports Complex and then the Anchors Children's Museum. So, I mean, I'm interested as long as Girdwood's in. If Girdwood's not in, I'm not in.
No other comments that I see. So thank you again for your time on this and new business. So next is our, oh, an announcement about the vacancy of PSAC CD, which the term is ending in twenty five six and it's the final page in the packet. Uh, is there anything to add on that, Margaret?
No, just, um, Tommy had originally submitted his resignation for mid-December, which would delay the ability to build the position. So a PSAC meets quarterly currently. So their next meeting, I think, is in February. So to me, it makes more sense to go ahead and get this posted now and collect resumes and just do it. So just looking for, you know, if anybody has an issue with that, then we could delay it. Um, and just trying to work within the kind of new structure that we're feeling our way out in.
Thank you for working with the structure with all of them. And it, it says on the notice that the applications are to be received by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 10th. So that's pretty soon.
So that would be, I think, the requirement usually is two weeks. And I was trying to stretch it over the weekends, but anyway, I, I think the more important thing is to get an opportunity for people to respond. We have holidays coming up. Um, and so I really just wanted to get it to you guys so that you could read those, um, resumes before your meeting and be ready to make an appointment. Hopefully in December, so that that person could be up and running.
Thank you, Margaret. And just to clarify, that is in the packet and it's, um, next is our new item, which is number 20, and it's regarding the email that we received today about capital projects or LERSA's and GBOS specifically addressed to us. So.
Sorry, do we want to circle? Do we delay? Do we want to come back to Bryce's point or do we want to hold off on that? Cause I think we delayed to hear the presentation.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, Bryce, did you have something to add after that?
Does the board wish to take any action tonight? Or are you guys considering waiting for LUC to take action? Or I guess I'd be more interested than the consensus of the board on how to proceed.
And the Agenda Item 14 that has been recurring. Does anyone feel there needs to be action taken tonight?
Sorry, you, you're asking about item 14, not about any of the other things. Okay.
I don't see any action.
Personally through the chair, I think, I think, thank you, Kyle, again, very much. I think you could probably wait until the next meeting because I doubt that they're going to pass this on the December 3rd Assembly Meeting. Um, nonetheless, I, uh, think that the next meeting will probably be where it either, either takes action or doesn't.
Correct. Appreciate the reminders.
Now that's, okay. Thank you, Greg.
Okay. Now, now to the new item, number 20. And like, if you would like to cover it briefly and.
Yeah, briefly. So there's a, um, there's a process, CIP process within the municipality that kind of, I don't think anyone really understands or nobody's really understood. Um, where, uh, requests are sent out to different communities and to different groups, um, uh, to request some capital projects. Uh, and these are collected and prioritized through some process. Um, and a, a package of tasks comes out of this. And sometimes there's, uh, attempt, there's, um, a request to the state to get money. Sometimes they request the federal government. Sometimes it goes on bonds. Um, and that process is never tied very well with the, um, with the service areas. So it hasn't tied in the past very well with the way Girdwood does things, or the way, um, Chuket, Eagle River does things, or even the way that LERSA's do things. LERSA's can't actually do capital work themselves. They have to ask for money from elsewhere. Um, and there's a, there's an attempt to sort of tie these together a little bit better this year. So there's been a specific request to us to provide, um, a list of capital projects we're interested in, um, over next year. We've already moved ahead and done some of this. So we have a bond. We've, we had, um, the Timberline Road Improvement Upgrade Work is going to be on a bond in, uh, next month, next, uh, April. And, uh, we, we got confirmation a while ago that there are things you can do to, you can't promote necessarily a voting yes or no, but you can promote information. So we can, uh, promote that the Girdwood bond for Timberline is only being paid for by Girdwood. We can promote that as much as we want to. But we just can't say therefore vote yes for it or therefore vote no for it. Um, but this, the, this, this particular request is about just general capital, um, improvement projects. I think we already have a list, uh, which we've developed as part of our budgeting process. And I believe we actually prioritized it as well.
We did.
Yeah. So I, I think this action is really, uh, just to introduce it, mention it's happening, basically ask, call the fill-in before, and then I think it has to be submitted the day after our next meeting. So maybe we can just look at it next meeting.
Yep, we can update that. And, you know, and just to give a, a, a refresh on that, um, like we said, the bond now has been moved and our other primary focus was to fish culvert on Mount Hood. Um, because we've known that sending a lot of requests to the state never grabs any attention, but if we can send just one item, we tend to have a better success. And that is, uh, directly tied to the state because of the access to a state, um, airport. So we've, we focused in on that one for this year. So, but we can update, uh, for your next meeting, we'll bring that list and we'll fill in the form and show you where we're at before.
So I think this also gives us the opportunity for listing projects we may want to do in the future.
Correct.
So we can allocate this to, you know, maybe next year or the year after.
Yep. The thing we have to be careful about with that is that the Muni will send all the projects down to Juneau and then it just overwhelms what our request is. And, uh, and for years we had projects on there and it never grabbed traction, but as soon as we narrowed it down to one or we came like, for example, we came with a feasibility report about something, um, then it usually grabbed more attention or traction. So.
I had a, I had a discovery person who's now managing that process, um, last week. And I think the, I think there's definitely a lot of clarity about problems in the past, particularly how it relates to service areas.
Yeah, you know, it's a common, when I talk with all the different service area people, the boards or the managers, they all express the same frustration that we're fighting against Anchorage to get the recognition, you know, and Girdwood's done a good job over the years of getting their own lobbyists or their own people involved to get money in. Um, but, you know, we had years of no capital budget. So kind of like last couple of years have been sort of a a bright spot that they've had capital dollars to give to us. So it's been good.
Okay, Jen, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on that line, I'm glad we're talking about this. I haven't really followed up on, um, a somewhat casual conversation that I had with, um, Senator Murkowski earlier this year that, um, she would appreciate Gird, she understands the Girdwood Anchorage dynamic. And it would be great if we talked to this board. She encouraged, uh, Girdwood to think of sending projects to her directly rather than relying on the Anchorage pipeline for exactly the same reason. And so uh, maybe when we talk about that, we can talk about what we might be able to send even farther up the chain.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. I would like to add, I could be mistaken, but I think on the email it said that we're supposed to write a resolution to be submitted on the 17th. So the form slash resolution, if anyone needs I can help or be the appropriate person. Uh, kind of.
Just clarification as CHIBAS or other Girdwood organizations send in CAPSIS requests directly into, because it's, that's kind of the third bucket. There's one bucket, which is the CIP process. There's the working with legislators to get a CAPSIS request in, then there's the federal. I'm just curious, is there an existing history of CAPSIS projects?
Absolutely. Yes.
There'd be, it's kind of considerable success at all. Advocate for any more within the CAPSIS.
Yeah.
Uh, Crystal, uh, this is the Girdwood Inc. was successful in getting half a million dollar CAPSIS for the childcare project too.
The three bears on the, yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
For you by your grocery and drop your kid.
Probably make that mistake sometime.
Oh, I guess made nonstop.
It would probably be the next thing we want to grow is the three bears. Soon as we could know what the little bear is. They got a place.
Um, Bryce?
Thank you, Jer. Um, for what it's worth, I did look over the legislative program, which is part of the CIP. Generally speaking, at least in prior administrations, sometimes the CIP budget submitted by LERSA's or in this case, you know, service area. Would also be incorporated into the Assembly's legislative agenda, which is supposed to be passed at the next Assembly Meeting, usually the first one in December. Um, for what it's worth, they threw the word Girdwood in, but have zero projects listed in their legislative priorities for more capital request funding in Girdwood. Which is a real shame because I know in previous years, you know, we included Rua Road and other, um, projects. Um, but just for what that's worth, I'm not sure. The question, I guess, specifically another one would be for Kyle regarding how CAPSIS works this year is if the administration is taking that on from their part. We're expected to do that at a service area level. Cause I don't know how that's being processed, I guess. How, how are we doing that this year with the administration in the city?
Well, I think this is part of the effort here is to, um, get them to get those in there for us. And, uh, otherwise we'll use millions of our own to get them in there as well. That aspect. So, so I think we're, it's good to see they're doing this effort. I've never seen this before where they've actually reached out directly to service areas and started asking for this. Um, service areas always kind of has been left behind. So, so I'm hoping to see that we can push this a little bit harder. And then once things get going in Juneau, we can make sure those things get into CAPSIS and move along. So.
Thank you. Jer, I had a comment. I think public works were very impaired that service areas feel that now this process, they're complaining about.
Yeah, well, definitely. I know that it was to the administrators here quite a bit. And there's been a big change in administration. A lot of people retired and new people came in. And so I think they've become more in tune with the fact that service areas are struggling to keep up with the capital needs.
Bryce, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, yeah, I just think I'm really glad to see there's kind of new change in the administration. And, uh, I just, uh, hope that, you know, we also as a community don't take that for granted and, you know, um, hope that it doesn't fall on the wayside, you know, with potential new people could, could happen. So that's why I asked specifically about CAPSIS to make sure that we need to input our own CAPSIS requests. We, we do so before deadline, which is early January usually or something. So. Yeah, something like that. So, and that's, thank you, Jer.
Anything else, uh, that wraps up our agenda? There's reports and reports are there. Margaret, do you have any? And entertainment for Girdman? Bryce, second. For Gird.
Good day, everybody.